The regular meeting was called to order at 7:00 PM. Regular council agenda for June 16th, 2025 was accepted as presented. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Sob, all in favor? Motion carries. We'll get right into reports. We'll start with our CAO report, Neil.
Okay, so really the only major update for this, this meeting is that we have the draft intermunicipal committee motion regarding recreation on your agenda for tonight. I don't think I have anything else to add on that.
Okay. Any questions regarding the status report?
Just to call.
Councillor Miller.
I know it could be.
Your, your microphone.
Sure. I note that it does come up later, but I'm, I'm questioning the tribute wall design and the, the fee set aside for it. And a comment probably out of context, but I'm going to do it anyhow. I'm wondering if the, the choice of location is maybe not the best location. And I'm wondering if it shouldn't be outside. If we want something like this, that's weatherproof and weather tolerant and visible by everyone who visits the community, not just in the community hall, then I'm questioning whether or not we've selected the right location, whether it shouldn't or couldn't be outside, either outside the town hall, which I don't think is a good idea, but outside the community hall, outside might be a better idea. I don't know if that will affect the budget that we have here, but I'm just throwing it out there for consideration.
Um, do we want to speak to the senior report or do you want to speak to it now?
Um, I think it'll be in the corporate services report that they've currently, there wasn't a great response to the request for proposals, but we have managed to get a response out of a couple of signage companies who do this kind of work on interiors, you know, basically tribute walls or donor walls, that sort of thing. And we're currently waiting on some pricing, I believe, for, for that.
Yeah, maybe we'll have this on our agenda for the meeting and well, we've got committee of the whole. Would that be appropriate to talk about more? With the next week committee of the whole and just, um, because there was an RFD a couple of months ago regarding this and maybe we just need to regroup and see where we're at with things.
True. My comment is generated as a result of the lack of response to the RFP. And that's why I thought, well, maybe, maybe the artists or the fabricators of such artwork weren't real interested in the location. I don't know that for sure, but I'm just suggesting that maybe we should revisit this. That's all.
Okay. Yeah, we'll chat about next week then a little bit more and see where we're at. Um, any other questions regarding the status report? Not seeing any. We'll go on to the capital plan status. Was there anything you wanted to highlight, Neil?
The 29th Avenue work is largely completed now. Wastewater means relining work is largely completed as well. It's been quite a busy time for, for utilities and public works. There's more sidewalk work and road surface work to come. But in general, we're getting through the list quite well this year.
Any questions? Not seeing any. We'll go on to your report there, Neil. Is there anything you wanted to highlight?
Um, just to remind counsel, we have left level two water restrictions in place. For the time being, we will review that again in the, in the near future. The weather forecasts are, aren't brilliant for rain, but I think there's some coming in the next few days. Budget dependent work will continue to trace as many wastewater collector infiltration leaks and water distribution leaks throughout the summer. It, it's a pretty challenging project for utilities that. And we, just as an aside, we got some analysis back from the hydrology company just recently and the chemical composition of the water down there appears to be largely groundwater. It does not match with municipal treated water. So.
Which is what you guys had kind of anticipated.
Well, yeah, kind of hoping we were looking for a municipal water leak in the, in the mix and we may still be, but it seems to largely be a community groundwater seasonal problem.
Interesting. And I see there about, um, public works operator. That's incredible. That's great news.
Yeah.
Um, any questions for Neil on his report? Not seeing any. We'll go on to the financials and the accounts payable report. Any questions regarding that, Councillor Mitchell?
Yeah, Clayton's not here. Um, I'm seeing our tipage fees. Do we break out the branches? Or is that just all in one tipage fee?
I believe it's all in one, but I can check on that.
I'd, yeah, because I'd really like to have an idea what the tipage fee for the branches are. And we can't mix that in with our home garbage tipage. That's, that has to be broken out so we know exactly what it's costing us to haul branches to the landfill.
Okay. I can get back to you on that.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. Corporate service managers report. Any questions for Clayton? Not seeing any operations manager. Was there anything you wanted to highlight there, Neil? Yeah, that was already talked about.
I, I think what I've hit on is really the, the, the situation we were dealing with in the spring has largely receded for the time being. Uh, and our focus is on getting ready for the installation of the, uh, de-watering equipment, which may not happen until the third quarter, engineers have advised. We're also focused on, uh, on, as I say, more leak detection work and other repair work as we, as much as we can within budget allowances. The last few months have put quite a dent in, in things, as you can imagine. Visual inspection of the 24th, uh, of the 24 inch sewer main was completed with the new sewer camera robot. Groundwater infiltration was observed there. And that's really what they're doing. They're cammering, addressing any, any leaks that they do observe at joints and so on. But in terms of finding a major source, not really. It's all little, small points of entry.
Any questions? Not seeing any. I'll go to the planning and development. Any questions regarding that? Uh, we'll go to the P S S report. Any questions? I'm sorry, I missed the, go ahead, Councillor Miller.
Are we on the Westview Metals Stormwater Pond? Is that?
Uh, that would have been operations, but we can certainly go back. I missed Parks and Rec as well.
It's Parks and Rec and, and operations.
Yeah, so we'll go into Parks and Rec.
Can I ask then what precipitated this study of the pond? I, I thought we did a survey on it last year.
No, it, it's a necessary prelude to dredging the, the pond. We basically identify where the, where the large, large quantities of material are, which allows companies to estimate if correctly in terms of what, what they need to extract. It is pretty full, the, the wet pond, and we are going to have to proceed with that project. But with that report, we're now in a position to go out to RFP with some degree of confidence that what will be quoted will actually be the costs.
So this, this survey is expected to be the basis for the tender call? Is that how this is going to work?
Yeah, that's how they do it.
And is that planned in, in our current budget?
It's, it's planned for next year.
Next year. So it's not at a critical level that this work has to be done this year?
No, it doesn't. It's not a must do this year, but we are getting pretty close to it having to be done.
I read with interest that there apparently is no spring that's filling the pond. It's just groundwater and I've, I've, in years gone by, I have heard that it was fed by a spring, so that's no longer the case? Never was the case then, I guess.
Well, I don't think it's, never say never, but there's a groundwater source that keeps that thing full, even in the height of drought. But historically, if you look at aerial photography prior to the development of Westview, there is an area right where the wet pond is, which was, shall we say, greener, more trees. There was more moisture in that location. I think operations would still like to dig a few holes around there and see what they find.
Yeah, I witnessed our operations manager making those comments and those observations. So is that going to be part of or could be part of?
It could be part of that work at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, Parks and Recreation. Were there any questions or anything you wanted to highlight, Neil?
Um, just the, the major note that I believe Jordan brought up was we had playground inspections done and generally they scored okay. The pool request for proposals was completed and awarded to Aquatic Amusements. It was quite, we received several somewhat competitive proposals. So we, we think this is a decent one to move forward with. That'll be, that'll go ahead after the pool closes and into September, October. And that was a budgeted item for this year. Yeah, that's, that's really the, the two main items. And of course, the work on the kitchen and the, and the THRC is underway.
All right. On Councillor Miller?
Sorry.
It's okay.
I, um, when we had the condition assessment done of the pool, my memory is failing me. Was there not some structural issues to the concrete basin that were recommended?
There was no major structural related recommendations in that report. They were more focused on electrical and that sort of thing. We were a little disappointed in that focus. The liner needed replaced and we wanted to be sure we were doing the right thing. But in general, it got a good condition assessment and companies and engineers that have come to look at it have all said to us frankly, they've seen worse pools. So we, we are hopeful we'll get our 10 to 15 on, on the next liner.
Are you carrying a contingency in the event that when they pull the vinyl liner out, that there isn't some spalling or concrete deterioration?
We are keeping that in mind, yes.
Yeah?
Yes, we are keeping in mind there could be some extra things here and there.
So whatever the vinyl liner costs us, there is the potential for some uptick.
There could be.
Yeah. There's no vinyl liner in this pool.
No, no, it's a concrete liner.
It's a concrete liner painted.
Painted.
Yeah.
Well, what are they putting in now?
Probably the similar. If I, if I recall correctly, it's probably a similar, just a grout and then painted.
Is that correct?
I don't think it's, I don't think they're.
Actually, no, no, this is going to be a PVC.
Yeah, that's how I read it.
Yeah. Yeah. No, we, uh, we, we were advised to go that direction by a variety of individuals in the industry and we hope, we hope it's the correct direction.
Okay, so my, I'm sorry, my question is then moot. There's no vinyl liner coming out, so the concrete is readily observable?
Yeah.
And if there was any issue with it?
Yes, but that doesn't mean there might not be some unexpected things happen.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it is old.
All right. Uh, the fire chief, Chief Dossman, is there anything you wanted to highlight in your report?
Sorry, councillor's on. Can you hear me? Uh, just, we have a couple of new recruits that started a few weeks ago. One returning firefighters, so things are looking up on the recruitment side. So, thank you.
That's great news. Thank you. Any questions for Chief Dossman? Not seeing any. Carlos report. Is there anything you wanted to highlight there, Neil?
I would say essentially in just a really busy, a really busy time forum at this time of year, as you can imagine. The, uh, the bike rodeo went extremely well and thank you to everyone that helps with that every year. No, I, I, I think other, and of course, we're, we're dealing with a few more bylaw enforcement files at this time of year too, which always have the capacity to surprise us in terms of what's going on and with whom. Just if you ever do hear any questions or anything that's happening, just get in touch with me and I can try and provide more context.
Okay, any questions? Not seeing any. Go into council reports. So just a reminder, we do have committee of the whole next Monday. Uh, Councillor Sob, thanks for including your report there. At this time, can we have a motion that all written reports as recorded on the agenda for June 16th, 2025 be received for information and filing? Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Mitchell, all in favor? Motion carries. The councillors, all having read the minutes, there being no errors, submissions or corrections. The minutes of the regular meeting of the council of the town of Nettin Hall, June 2nd, 2025, were accepted as distributed. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Dossman, all in favors? Motion carries. Okay, we will get right into the utility bylaw, which we saw the draft of last meeting. Neil?
So there's been no real additional changes apart from the addition of a penalty schedule. We've gone through it and added that to be in line with other jurisdictions and that kind of approach. Basically, if council have any questions, please, please do go ahead.
Any questions regarding the bylaw that's in front of us this evening? Pretty straightforward. We can do all three readings this evening. Move to read Town of Nettin bylaw 140725, a bylaw to govern municipal utilities for a first time. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Sob, all in favor? Motion carries. Move to read Town of Nettin bylaw 140725 for a second time. Who would like to make that motion? Councillor Miller, all in favor? Motion carries. Unanimous consent to read Town of Nettin bylaw 140725 for a third time was granted by all of council present. Councillor Mitchell, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move to read Town of Nettin bylaw 140725 for a third and final time. Councillor Dossman, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we'll go on to item 4.2.2. This is the resolution that came out of our intermunicipal collaboration framework meeting that we would like to present to Alberta municipalities with respect to recreation. Thank you, Neil, for drafting this. And we did chat with Alberta municipalities when they were here last week about it. And I know Neil's been getting support as well from Alberta municipalities on it as far as what the draft looks like. So I'll hand it over to Neil.
So, so this is a typical convention style resolution with quite a few wherazas and one, one act of, one act of clause. The active one is it is therefore resolved that Alberta municipalities advocate to the government of Alberta to either one, amend the Act of Communities Initiative to make municipalities eligible for application, or two, create a new annual or biannual funding program for municipalities that enable them to effectively leverage their available capital reserves and local partnerships for new and existing recreation infrastructure for the benefit of their communities. The town of Innisfail last year put forward a, a resolution very similar to the first part of the, the resolution that amend the Act of Communities Initiative. And that actually failed at con, uh, uh, in, in the convention. It didn't pass. We're taking a slightly different angle and we have sent a copy of this to Innisfail and hope they might second it. To basically say, well, either do that, either change it to make municipalities eligible or create a new separate program for municipalities and their infrastructure. Because right now we've, we're in a strange kind of situation where we'd be have to, we'd have to be talking to the likes of the Marlins to apply for a new pool liner on our behalf with our support. And it doesn't make a lot of sense to anybody, that kind of approach for municipal infrastructure. So we've talked with Alberta municipalities about it. They helped me shape this a little further. The wherazas provide some of the context. One of the, what we hope are more compelling comparative contexts is that last year Ontario created a program called the Community Sport and Recreation Infrastructure Fund, which was number one to repair or upgrade existing sport and recreation facilities. And it was for municipalities to apply for. So there, an argument can be made that a program like that is absent. An argument can also be made from our perspective that the local government fiscal framework isn't enough for us to be using large chunks of it, of that small amount of money every year to spend on recreation over things like water, sewer, roads. But again, if the government says that's all the money there is, that's all the money there is. So hopefully this strikes the right, the right note. I have sent a copy of this to, as I say, Town of Innisfail and also down the road to Fort MacLeod and to Clare's Home, as this was discussed at the ICF meeting. We also, Alberta municipalities have also made me aware of another municipality that could be approached for a second if, if we struggle at all.
Any questions regarding this? So essentially we just need a motion tonight to move this forward and submit it to Alberta municipalities. Councillor Dossman, very soothing. Um, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, uh, information brief on council remuneration and travel. Neil?
Okay, so I, I looked at the past records and council has, in, in recent past anyway, opted to review council remuneration and travel expense policies and make amendments ahead of term expiry as an outgoing body. Administration is checking to assess if there's any appetite with you to review or make any amendments ahead of the October general elections. The, no adjustments have been made since 2021, although the policy was updated just last year for the inclusion of annual healthcare spending of $950 as an alternative to group health and dental benefit. For illustration, where a consumer price index applied to remuneration pursuant to section 1.3 of the current policy, the changes for 2026 would be an increase of $234.05 per month for the mayor and an increase of $164.70 per month for a councillor. The travel expense policy was adjusted quite recently in 2023, so we have no recommendations to make at this time around that. And th- this is an entirely political decision for you. And within your purview, all I'd suggest is it's four years and if you want to give it a look, now's a good time.
So with this being an information brief, we can have kind of a brief discussion about it and send it back to you guys for a request for decision. Okay. All right. Let's open it up for discussion. Who wants to start us off? Councillor Miller?
I would like to indicate my strong support for an increase in the mayor's salary. Given what my observations of the activities that our mayor puts out in this community is, in my opinion, above and beyond the call of duty. Our mayor gets involved with schools, with kids, with recreation, with all kinds of community related functions and events. And if anyone on council is deserving of an increase, it is our mayor and I would strongly support an increase for our mayor.
Councillor Mitchell, thank you, Councillor Miller.
Yeah, I don't think anybody would disagree with that, but it's not this mayor. It's the mayor.
The mayor. I didn't say this mayor.
Yes. You just referred to, oh, you think this mayor does. So, which is what a mayor should do. I'm not saying they're not, but, and I'm all taking nothing away from what our mayor does. We did have a $950 in a sense increase last year. So is there a way, and we've done this with other, like with the franchise fees, that we're, we're on par with everybody else? Where there's that average or whatever it is, you know? We did that with the franchise fees, figure out the highs and the lows and kind of try to be right in that meaty part of the curve. Is there a way, is that?
Yeah, I can get, I can get that put together for you.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if there's a bylaw that, or sorry, if we can have it, that it's adjusted every year? Or do you have to, each council has to vote on that because it's an increase and it's a budgetary item, right?
If you were going to amend it, you, you could do that. I'd say not, not having it automatic makes it more painful every time you, you do review it.
Yeah, I suppose. Okay. Okay.
And thank you for that, Councillor Mitchell. Because that works quite effectively with our franchise fees where it just falls middle of the row. I guess we'll have to see what that looks like actually. Uh, Councillor Sob?
Thank you. Neil, is the consumer price index in place now?
Under the policy?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Okay. It's just that it was left as an optional thing for council to consider and add, but the guidance in the policy was that the consumer price index adjustment was to be followed.
I'm in favor of following the consumer price index for the rate increase.
Thank you, Councillor Sob. Any other comments regarding this? Yeah, it's, it's always a tricky thing, um, discussing our own remuneration. And I know other municipalities, they have kind of an external group that makes recommendations based off of, you know, averages with similar sized communities. But I think, yeah, if we could get the RFD that incorporates, um, similar sized municipalities and then we can make a decision of that information and, um, and go from there. And, uh, yeah, and what Councillor Mitchell said as well, we can always look at what that could look like as well.
Yeah. Could you pass a resolution to request a request for decision on that? Yeah.
Could I have a motion? For a request for decision on council remuneration? Councillor Miller, all in favor? Motion carries. Thanks, guys. Um, all right, 6.1.1. Neil showed this to me a couple of weeks ago and I was really, um, this is something that could have been approved through operations, but we thought it was important that it was on record. This leach and initiative that they're looking to take on this year. um, this leach and initiative that they're looking to take on, um, this year, so, uh, Neil, was there anything you wanted to speak to it?
So our, our understanding is there's no financial aspect to this, they're simply seeking permission to do it. I would add though that, that this will, that this may set some form of precedent, and the town does not have a policy on these kinds of things at present. However, we see, operationally, we see no real issues with it.
Any questions, um, I really like the idea that being more prominent and on an actual roadway as opposed to just by the, by the bomber, but whatever makes, works for them, councillor Miller?
I wouldn't have any trouble supporting this, I think it's a, a great cause and a great, um, a great show of our support, but I, I would echo R C A O's comments that it may set a dangerous precedent. And so for that reason, and perhaps for that reason alone, I would like to see a policy developed for it, for how we undertake this and how we approve this kind of artwork, if you want to call it that. I would hate for self-interest groups to come to council or to administration with sort of things that we don't necessarily want to approve. So if we have a policy, then at least we have a guideline in terms of how we would go about approving it, or if or when we would approve it. So I have no issue with this at all, I think it's a great idea, but I would like to see a policy developed for, um, painting or
Crosswalks.
Crosswalks.
So you're making a motion as such?
I'm making a motion to request a policy development.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion that's in front of us? All in favor? Motion carries. And then, so then as far as this project goes, do they need a response yet, or, um?
I would, i- if council has no objections to this particular one, it needn't. We can, we can provide an indication on this positively if you wish. It's simply that at the same time, we need a there's going to be a discussion of a policy going forward.
Everyone's comfortable moving this project forward at this point in time? You don't need a motion for that, though, it's?
I don't think so, we, we, we thought we could probably say yes, but it it's become a kind of emotive topic in recent years, those.
All right, we'll move on to item six point two point one, municipal affairs aquatic invasive species prevention letter from, uh, Minister Schultz. Item six point two point two, the Canadian Royal Canadian Mounted Police Fourth Quarter Report. Item six point two point three, the Royal Canadian Mounted Police Pilot Project CPIC, uh, response letter. And at this point in time, at seven thirty-three, we'll ma- need a motion to hold closed confidential sessions pursuant to section one nine seven two of the Municipal Government Act RSA two thousand, chapter M two six, and the Freedom of Information and Protection of Pregnancy Act as follows, item seven point one, request for decision offered to purchase land access to Land Access to Information Act, A T I A, section two nine, advice from officials, and section thirty, economic interests of the municipality. Item seven point two, Livingston Range School Division Access to Information Act, A T I A, section two eight, local public body competences, and item seven point three, the Chief Administrative Officer Performance Evaluation Access to Information Act, A T I A, section two two, confidential evaluations, who would like to make a motion to go to closed? Councillor Sob, all in favor?